Please rise as I call the meeting of the Board of Trustees of Riverside Township to order, and Trustee Highlandbach, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. And Clerk Reyes, please call the roll.
Trustee Clark.
Present.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Present.
Trustee DeCostela.
Present.
Trustee Carroll.
Present.
Clerk Reyes is here. Supervisor Wilt.
Here.
That's everybody.
Okay, we have a quorum. All right, so first order of business is the approval of the minutes of the April 8th Board Meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 8th Board Meeting.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Carroll, seconded by Trustee DeCostela, to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on April the 8th. Is there, are there any corrections, additions, comments? Hearing none, then all in favor of accepting these minutes as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. And then we have the minutes of the closed session that was part of that meeting, and I will entertain a motion for that.
I'll make a motion as following that to...
A motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Carroll, seconded by Trustee DeCostela, to approve the minutes of the closed session of April 8th. Any discussion there? Any additions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you. All right, we'll move to new business, and the order's a little different than usual to accommodate the library. The first item is the approval, and this is only because they're asking for a waiver of rental fee for their community organization fair to be held here on September the 6th, which is a Saturday. Normally, this would be a $100 rental fee, and we have a request for waiver. What is your pleasure? And we have Diane Silva present if you have any questions for her.
I make a motion. We request the grant, the waiver for the public libraries fundraiser.
But it's not a fundraiser, is it?
No, it's actually a community fair, so all the people in town are going to be invited to host a table, so the public can learn a little bit more about all the different ways that can get involved.
So you're not charging any admission or anything?
I stand corrected.
That's fine.
And I will second the corrected motion.
Okay. I have a motion by Trustee Highlandbach, seconded by Trustee Clark, to waive the fee, the rental fee for the library for their community organization fair. Any discussion? Hearing none. Since this involves money, I will ask for a roll call.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Trustee DeCostela.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes. Motion is carried. Okay, that is waived, and then we will go to the community partnerships, and the first item is a request from Riverside Public Library for a, what is it called here? It's an ADA ASL translator, so that Americans, they can utilize this rather than hiring actual translators at $180 per visit, and this would be basically an iPad with programming for American Sign Language.
Yeah, but basically it's a...
Would you step to the podium?
I'm bringing up some story.
Oh, I, that's all right.
So it is essentially a tablet that is connected to a specialized translation device. So a person who's giving a presentation can be speaking, and a person who needs assistance can have the device with them, and it'll translate everything that's being said. So our goal is that we have it for our use, but also it would be something that we could lend out to various, the township if you needed, or the village for events that they may also need this type of service for.
Is this just one unit that costs that much?
It is just one unit, yeah.
Okay.
And it translates hands ASL?
No, it is translating to words. So it is actually, it's becoming a reading device, but it translates closed captioning in real time.
Oh.
Oh, I see, I see.
The ASL translator is confusing. It makes it sound like it...
Yes, yes. No, that would be very hard.
Yes.
No, it actually closed caption translates.
Okay.
This is, it's a portable unit, I'm assuming, right?
Yes.
Portable handheld.
Yep.
If approved, and when you get it, would you be able to do a demonstration for us?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
That'd be awesome.
Okay. Any other questions? And what is your pleasure?
I make a motion that we approve the $1,599 purchase of the translator.
Okay, I have a motion by Trustee Clark. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Carroll. Then this would be to approve a partnership to purchase for Riverside Public Library at the cost of $1,599, an ASL translator that would give closed caption translation of verbal communication, and they have promised to share it with others if needed, so.
And give us a demonstration.
And give us a demonstration, yes. So any other questions now that we have a motion? Hearing none, would you please call the roll for a vote?
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee DeCostela.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes. Motion is carried.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a community partnership request from Riverside Junior Women's Charity. Is there someone here to represent? Would you please step to the podium? Thank you. And identify yourself and give us just a little synopsis.
My name is Andrea Kitamira, and I am the VP fundraising for Riverside Juniors.
Okay, and you are requesting $2,000, and this is for this weekend's event?
It is, yes.
Just under the water here, aren't we?
No, that's how, you know, those volunteer organizations, we like to do it that way.
Can you just encapsulate how it's going to be used?
Sure. So Riverside Fest, as you all are probably aware, is a new event that we're doing. It's our major fundraiser for the year. And the thing that we really focused on this year was sort of trying to bring people downtown, get business into our local businesses, these types of things, but we also didn't want to demand too much donation from our local establishments here in Riverside. And so part of the budgeting here is that we're paying for our guests to come into the restaurants. And so as you can probably tell, that adds a lot to the budget that Riverside Juniors is sort of creating and that we're paying out, which we're happy to do, but also this is a fundraiser for us to be able to put into our giving fund to give out to the community. So we were just hoping for a partnership with the township in order to sort of help us encourage people downtown, contribute to our giving fund, help this event be more successful.
I don't understand this event whatsoever.
Okay.
Okay, so are you closing the street?
No.
Okay. So people are just walking up and down Burlington and stopping at the food places and not paying to eat, and this is a fundraiser?
Exactly, exactly. So we have a bracelet that has tickets on it, and when you stop in the tour stops, they take your little piece, and then you get a tasting portion at that restaurant. And so the ticket price that you've paid gives you access to food and drink from that restaurant, and it's kind of what we maybe in our twenties would call a crawl, like a food and beverage crawl, you know, but we're calling it a tasting tour. And so, you know, folks are stopping in La Barra, they're stopping in Choo Choo, they're stopping at Riverside Foods to sort of try the food and drink that are there, get out downtown, hopefully stop in some of the other places around downtown, that type of thing.
And how much were the tickets?
They were 75 for the savory, and they were 30, or were 35 for the sweet treat, because there's a more family-friendly sweet option as well.
Per person?
Mm-hmm.
And same for the kids?
The kids for the 35 is, yeah.
Because there's no alcoholic beverages involved, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And where, you said that this might go to help pay for the live music?
So this year, so certainly, so last year, we had like a whole band situation going on at Brew Fest. This year, we just have sort of more like the farmer's market does with a little tent with a guitar player, but, you know, we all, we do have sort of these ancillary costs to pay those folks, to pay for printing, to pay for signage, that type of thing, and because we're paying out to the restaurants, that is such a huge chunk of the budget this year, and so, you know, we would just be thankful for support from the community.
Okay, where is the music going to be?
Over by the water tower in Centennial Park.
Okay. And then how are we going to get recognized for donating this because your signs and everything are already printed?
So because you all have been supportive of us historically, we have you still on our website, you're on our signage, and going forward, what we would do is just recognize you throughout the next year.
What signage are we on right now?
Currently, we have a sponsor banner that Riverside Township's logo is on.
And where is that put up?
At the print. Where will it be put up? Currently, it's at the printer. It will be put up in Centennial Park.
Good.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's kind of the hub of it?
Yes, yeah.
So you printed our name before we granted you the money?
Well, because you, not in an expectation way, but I guess to us, we were, you have supported us for the past two years in our major fundraiser, and so it was not, we are happy to recognize you regardless of the outcome.
Okay. And this replaces Brew Fest?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you do have other sponsors.
We, we do, yes.
You have two other major sponsors, don't you, that I see on the signs or on Facebook?
I don't know what we classify as major, I mean, we have a sponsor that's sponsoring the outdoor space that we've rented, but...
Okay, so now I'm even more confused. What outdoor space did you have to rent if we're all walking up and down the sidewalk?
So Centennial Park that we are, you know, we're utilizing.
And you had to rent that from the village?
Actually, you know, I don't know the answers to that question. So...
Are other sponsors in this amount?
Riverside Township would be the largest.
We would be the largest?
Yes, yeah.
And this is the same amount that we've given you the last two years.
Correct.
Have we always been the largest?
No.
Who's larger than us?
In the past.
Yeah.
Little Teeth Big Smiles has given us a larger donation.
Okay.
Some folks have been the same.
All right, any other questions? Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'd be happy to make a motion that we engage with the community partnership with the Riverside Junior Women's Charity.
In the amount of...
In what amount?
In the amount of $2,000.
Okay. I have a motion to partner with Riverside Junior Women's Charity in the amount of $2,000 for their event. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Trustee Carroll, seconded by Trustee Highlandbach, to approve a $2,000 partnership with Riverside Junior Women's Charity. Any further discussion? Then would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee DeCostela.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. And get in touch with us, we'll have a check later this week.
Thank you so much.
Trustee Clark is going to be looking for those signs.
All right. And the next item is the Riverside Presbyterian Church Little Food Pantry.
Before I hand myself my paper, I'm going to share with you some sweets from Factor. If you're familiar with them, I heard them. I'll talk about this as I share the information about food pantry. I've got a spoon and some napkins. I'm sorry, I didn't expect everybody to be here, but if you want to take a napkin and use the spoon to get one of the sweets out and then pass that down.
Do we need to, Trustee Carroll?
I'm sorry?
We need to report this?
I think it's the... Oh, thanks.
I've got a list of what the contents are. There's almond butter, there's walnuts, there's chocolate, there's monk fruit.
Thank you.
And so, yeah, concerned about any kind of...
Allergies or...
Whatever, I could tell you whether there's a problem with this particular thing. Coconut, unsalted butter, blanched almond flour, vanilla extract, freeze dried bananas, and they're called chocolate walnut and banana macaroons with almond butter and coconut.
Okay, so tell us a little bit about what you need this year.
Yes, this, the front page is a narrative about the food pantry and a number of things you already are familiar with. We've been getting food from Riverside Foods and Aldi's on Mondays and Fridays from Aldi's and Riverside Foods, Tuesdays and Thursdays. It's basically anything they can't sell or that has come to the end date for sale, and they give it to us. We have to sort through it. Some of it is in edibles, so we have to throw that away, but what we, what is good, we put out in the little refrigerators in the preschool entrance at the church. We also get groceries, which we buy from Aldi's. We've had gift cards from Aldi's from you. Also, in the past year, we've had gift cards also from Costco, from Mariano's, and I believe Target. Target, we were getting dry pasta. Aldi's, we were getting a lot of different groceries, and that was our primary source of grocery items that we put in a cabinet in that entryway. But what is added this year is that Hauser Schools Cook last year was asked apparently by somebody at Hauser, what do you do with the food that you put out on the trays for the kids because they need, especially those that are getting reduced or free lunch, they have to have a certain amount of nutrition on the tray, and anything that the kids don't eat that remains sealed comes back to the kitchen, and they put that in boxes. And Chris calls me on, usually Wednesdays and Fridays, and I go over to the school and pick it up, and we put that in the refrigerator also, so that people can, often there's sandwiches, meat and cheese sandwiches, or they have sun butter, which they use instead of peanut butter because of allergies, sun butter and jelly sandwiches. We get little cups of fruit, little packages of carrots, celery, they chop up cauliflower and broccoli and put that in little packages, and they give us salad dressing for that and various other things. So it's a variety of things that we get back from them, and then we put up for the visitors to the food pantry. Also, in last fall, all of a sudden, we started finding these Factor meals, and normally they don't give us the sweet stuff, but they've been including some of the sweet stuff recently. But they give us the microwaveable meals that basically you microwave for anywhere from two to five minutes, and it's ready to eat. And Factor is owned by HelloFresh, which provides the food that you're supposed to chop up and, you know, cook yourself. But in this case, the meals come microwaveable, very quickly prepared. The first week, we got four cases, and each case has 42 meals in it, so it's 160 meals. The second week, we got 15 cases, which had over 600 meals, and we didn't know where they were coming from. I caught the people who were leaving them on the third week, and I said, why, where are you getting these and why are you dropping them off? And they said, we were, we worked for Factor, we were throwing away the meals that came to the end sale date, and we asked our boss, could we drop these off at a food pantry instead of throwing them away? And the boss said yes. So we happened to be on the route that they follow from either Aurora or Lake Zurich, which I guess are the distribution centers, and their drop off point for the trucks is Lyons, Illinois. So we're right on their route, and they drop them off every Wednesday afternoon. We ended, we get sometimes only like two cases, which had 80 meals or so, sometimes we get six or eight. Any overage, anything over four cases, I take to beds on Ogden, and also there was a Baptist church, Second Baptist Church in La Grange, that also took some meals when I got way more than we could use. Our folks, you know, snap them up sometimes just as an indication to me of the hunger that some people feel. I have found meals that have been opened and only the meat portion, which is partially cooked at least, only the meat portion taken out and eaten, and the rest of it put in the garbage can next to the food pantry, so. But that has been a real boon. It's like people wait for our Factor meals to come so that they can take them. I put them out in measured amounts so that they can last for a few days, and not, nobody can, you know, hoard, you know, 140 or 50 Factor meals. And we've gotten the largest from Hauser. They did a packing of pasta meals last, last year, and we're still trying to work those off. This year, they packed oatmeal, and I actually went over there to help with the oatmeal packing, and we've gotten 25 cases of the oatmeal, which is about maybe 750 oatmeal packets that we'd be putting out along with the oatmeal that we buy from Aldi's that are just the single packets. But the oatmeal packets can feed six out of one packet, and you have to cook the whole thing at one time. You can read the rest of it here. I included some figures for, my bookkeeping is not my strength. This year, Brad Staubus in the church is actually going to be keeping track of the money, so what I did was I included the Aldi purchases, and it shows at the beginning when we didn't, we had used up the gift cards from 2023, so all of those purchases were without gift cards other than the first one. And then where the gift cards, after the gift cards you gave us last year had been received, then I included what we purchased with gift cards and what we had to add from the church budget. And then on the back, it was all Dollar Tree because they had a process, a procedure for gift cards that was just more trouble than it was worth, so we pay for the Aldi's directly, and I get reimbursed for the Aldi's. But that's what we spent at Dollar Tree last year. And we also were paying some for things we were getting at Walmart. I found that Walmart had the cheapest cereal, they also have the cheapest breakfast bars and granola bars, so I've been going there to get those items, and so that we've been paying out of what the, what the church is providing. And what we would, I indicated at the bottom of the narrative here, that we'd like, again, most of our gift cards, if you're going to grant us, whatever amount you're going to grant us, about two, three fifths of it from Aldi's, one fifth from Costco where we get our canned chicken, and one fifth from Walmart where we've been getting a lot of cereal and the breakfast bars and that kind of thing.
Are there any questions?
Menards, I thought you said you got...
Yeah, Menards, we were getting the pasta sauce.
Because it comes in cans there.
But they went from 89 cents a can to $1.39 a can, and I tried to go when they have the 11% rebate, but ultimately, one of the things I found was that with the packets that came from Hauser...
Those didn't need sauce.
They go slowly because people would rather have the canned pasta sauce and the dry pasta that I get from Target rather than those packets, which you have to cook the whole amount at one time. So I decided we're not going to get any more of the canned pasta sauce and dry pasta, so we won't need Target or Menards, but we will just get rid of the, yeah, the Hauser packets that we got.
Any other questions?
I do have a, two questions, please. The amount that you're requesting from us, again, like I asked the lady before you, is that the single biggest donor? Are we the biggest donor?
Apart, it's the second largest donor other than the church itself, yeah.
The church itself, but from, from an entity, we are the largest donor then?
Yes, other than the church.
Okay.
We, just this year, began receiving monthly donations from a local resident who just moved here last year. She's not a member of the church, but she looked around and thought, how can I support my community? And so she's been giving us what will ultimately total about $3,000 for the year.
And, thank you. And one last question. If I understand it correctly, as you've told us last year, it's a, when you provide the food, there's no way of telling exactly who or where the residents are from, or if they're residents of the township, correct?
Right, right, yeah.
Down here, it did say from Lyons, Berwyn, but most from Riverside, but we don't know that for sure.
Right. That, that was based on the survey we did about three years ago. I plan to do another survey so that we can get maybe even a little bit more detailed information about the people that are, for example, how many people in the household and that kind of thing.
Sure.
Which I'll plan on doing this year. One of the things that I also do is I got some cards from Share Food, Share Love in Brookfield, and I taped some of those to our cabinet, and especially if I get a chance to talk with people and I see that they're regulars, I ask them if they're familiar with Share Food, Share Love, and if they say they aren't, I give them the card, and it tells when Share Food, Share Love is open to receive food. And I tell them, you can get a shopping cart twice a month, a shopping cart full of food twice a month if you go to Share Food, Share Love. So ours is kind of like a fill-in for people that don't need too much, but a lot of people come on the days that we're getting the produce, and in the morning, we put the produce out, and that often is taken very quickly.
Thank you.
Do I hear anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we grant the Riverside Presbyterian Church food pantry $5,000.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Trustee Clark, seconded by Trustee Carroll, to partner with Riverside Presbyterian Church Little Food Pantry in the amount of $5,000 in gift cards. Any further discussion? Then would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee DeCostela.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes. Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I'll be in touch when we got the cards for it.
Thank you. I'm thinking since there are some of these sweets that are over on...
Please share.
When, when these are water, they get a little sticky, but they're, they're...
All right. Next item on the agenda is the Selden Fox Audit Agreement. You have it in your binders. The cost is $10,000. It's well within what we've budgeted for.
And it's what we paid last year, right?
It's, I think it's just slightly more. I think we were at $9,600 and...
Do you need these, Jim?
Oh, here. Doug, did you want to share some napkins for those two? Okay. All right, so we have the engagement letter here, and I submitted for your approval.
Do you need a motion on it?
I would appreciate that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Selden Fox Engagement Letter for our Township Audit in the amount of $10,000.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Trustee DeCostela, seconded by Trustee Highlandbach, to approve the engagement letter in the amount of $10,000 with Selden Fox for our annual audit. Any discussion? Hearing none, then will you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee DeCostela.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes. Motion is carried. Thank you. Then this unsolicited offer of a roof management. I did connect with one of their referrals, St. Leonard School in Berwyn, and they, they gave them a good review. They said that this is... And they, they gave them a good review. They said that this, that it's working for them. I don't know if we need this or not, but this was an option. I know that we have concerns about the roof. And so this was a proposal that they would do minor repairs. They would inspect every year, do minor repairs and what, whatever needed consulting.
After we get a new roof.
That's what I was thinking. Exactly.
Now we all know it's garbage.
Right.
Yeah. Like I don't think they're going to teach us.
Okay. I mean, they were very thorough in their, you know, proposal. So I. Very well. I mean, save our money for, for the actual roof and.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so. At this point, I don't think there's any mystery that we need to address.
We know that. Correct. All right. Everybody's in agreement on that? So we'll table that. Okay, then. Next order of business is we have the invitation for the scholarship golf outing from the village of North Riverside, the mayor's golf outing. The price has gone up this year. Last year we sponsored three eagles at eight hundred dollars each. It has gone up to nine hundred dollars each. And I think we're struggling to fill that third foursome last time. So what is your pleasure? It would be eighteen hundred dollars if we go with two eagle sponsorships. And this all goes for scholarships for youth in North Riverside. Both academic scholarships and things for like camp, summer camp and things.
I, I can just say for me, I will not be able to attend this.
I won't either.
So there's your, there's a foursome, so I would go with two foursomes.
Can I have a motion to, to support them in some way?
Supervisor Wilt, if I may, I just wanted to, you know, express my, my approval of this event. I really appreciated attending last year. I thought that it really was a great event. But most specifically, I enjoyed that it goes to a great cause. So the proceeds from this event, as I understand it, supports the scholarship for Riverside Township and North Riverside students to go on to college. And, and I think they do a great job of bringing those students up at the, at the banquet or the luncheon after the event. And you hear a little bit about who they are and what they've, what they intend to do with their, with their education. And, you know, those are, those are our children. Those are, those are children from our communities. And we've gotten to know some of them and I'm just really proud of them. I'm glad we're a part of this event.
So do we want to sponsor two eagles then?
That's up to this board. You're asking the wrong person. I'm not a golfer.
I think we should sponsor two eagles.
Okay. Is that a motion?
I would make the motion to sponsor two eagles.
Okay. I have a motion to provide a two eagle sponsorship to the mayor's golf outing for North Riverside. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Open for discussion. No comments? Okay, then. Would you please, we have a motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Highlandbach. And would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach?
Yes.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Trustee DeCosta?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes. Very well. Motion is carried and that'll be two eagles. Please let me know if you are interested in participating in those tickets. Next item is, it's that time of year. The farmer's market in Riverside is about to begin again. And I would recommend that we continue our program of providing any food pantry participants with four five-dollar vouchers each month during that market for fresh produce and other food items. And I will entertain a motion or am willing to discuss a change. We, our numbers in our food pantry are higher. Otherwise I might recommend an additional voucher, but I wouldn't go that because we have more people participating than, than ever.
So you're comfortable where you're at right now with it or?
I am.
With the amount?
Yeah. I am comfortable with it.
Well, if she, if supervisor, if you have to come back because of the pantry, I, I wouldn't have a problem approving additional funds for this. I mean, it's a good program.
I'm hoping that if the food pantry needs more, that at some point we will have some rules about utilizing some general assistance funds. We don't have that, those, those guidelines in place yet. But once we do, then, then if, you know, the food pantry needs more money. But as you'll hear in my report, we've recently gotten quite a bit of contributions as well. So, yeah, I, I'm comfortable with doing the, the four per month.
I'd like to make a motion that we continue with the, with the food pantry voucher program for the Riverside Farmer's Market.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by trustee DeCosta, seconded by trustee Highlandbach to provide food pantry participants with four five-dollar vouchers each month during the time of the farmer's market, which would be June through September. They, they end early October.
Okay.
And any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach?
Yes.
Trustee Carol?
Yep, yes.
Trustee DeCosta?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes. Motion is carried. Okay. And then we, we've started getting the applications for the Independence Day parades for North Riverside, Brookfield and Riverside, I'm sure is just around the corner. And I'm just asking if you want to participate in all three. And I would entertain a motion if you plan to do so.
Absolutely. I think it's great. I love the parade.
Okay. By the way, the start times, our Riverside is at eight forty-five. North Riverside and Brookfield both start at ten. And for those of you who go to Brookfield, they are changing the route this year because of some construction on Grand Avenue. So there will be a little, little jog in the. And they're also, there's a change in the after-party. They're, they're bringing it back to Grand Avenue this year, I believe, rather, or they're bringing it more visible than just in the park that they, they normally do.
Oh, okay.
So it may be because of the change in the route as well. Okay. So was that a motion, trustee Highlandbach, that we participate?
Sure.
Okay. I have a motion to participate in all three parades. And do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Highlandbach, second by trustee DeCosta to participate in all three parades in our community for the Independence Day. Any discussion? Then there's really no cost involved. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All pose nay. Motion is carried. Thank you. All right. So is there any, was there any communication?
There were no communications.
All right. Then our reports. Forgot to print one out for myself. So if I, I will just tell you that since our last meeting, I've been very busy with general assistance as the GA warrant lists will show you. I participated in a TAC Township Officials of Cook County Supervisors Meeting on April seventeenth, where we elected new officers. All the officers had reached term limits. So I will no longer be treasurer of that group, but I still need to transition the accounts to my successor. There was very good discussion among the supervisors on a number of topics and I always learn something new. So I encourage all our board members to get involved in their own divisions, at least on this county level. Those meetings can be very interesting. There will be, speaking of Township Officials of Cook County, there will be, their spring conference is a little late for spring, but it's on Thursday, June twenty-sixth. I don't have a flyer yet, but registration is open. All they have online is just the, the registration material. It will be taking place at the Doubletree Hilton on Spring Road in Oakbrook with breakout sessions and dinner, just as you've experienced in the past. These are usually pretty valuable interactions. So please let me know if you want to register for it and we'll register as a group. The event begins at five P M., but I think they're, the breakout sessions are a little bit later than that. That's kind of gathering and, and registration. If you are wondering when the clock tower will get fixed, there's been some discussion. Our technician is very busy, but we do have him scheduled to come out on July ninth. That was the earliest date we could get. So there, we will, I'll also be looking into the cosmetic changes, but I want to make sure it's working before we fix the face of the clock. I helped with the Lyons Club Chicken Dinner as a member and we, they, we had a pretty steady flow of diners, although not as large as in the olden days, pre-COVID. But I believe they made almost the same amount as last year. I attended a reception by Aging Care Connections last week where they recognized donor organizations for making their services possible. And you will find later on, there is something about a rally cry for, for the support of, you know, funding, which makes, makes many of these senior programs and services possible. The, we had several drop-offs of food for the food pantry from Hauser and Ames Schools, for which we are very grateful. We also received a drop-off of the same fortified oatmeal packets that you heard about from the Little Food Pantry. We have about twenty boxes of that. We still had some of the pasta, which we just can't seem to go through fast enough. But they actually offered, that there was another pantry in Berwyn, that they were going to a church in Berwyn where they could share some of those. So they didn't have those. So I did move some of that forward. And I think that the, the cereal, the oatmeal is going to be a little bit more practical for us. Last Saturday was the Letter Carriers Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive. And I'm very grateful to the Public Works Department of North Riverside for picking up the food on Monday and bringing the truckload of it to the town hall. I think it's more than we've ever received. It's not always all fresh. I thank the residents who donated unexpired food for this annual drive. We received a lot of donations and it took two days to sort and shell the donations. We have our shred event this coming Saturday between nine A M. and noon at the Masonic Lodge Parking Lot, just as a reminder, on Forest Avenue. It is free, but we appreciate any food pantry donations there as well. So please come out with your documents that need destruction on site. We did have, we were questioned recently, quite adamantly to make sure that we actually, that it's actually, they can see it shredded on site. And I said, yes, there's a camera. You can see the material going into the truck. You can follow it on the camera, see it turn into shredded paper and so forth. So. So that is this coming Saturday. The Nurses Closet has also been quite busy lately. I think that spring brings out orthopedic surgeries that were put off in the winter. So I think that that's why we have so many people who come out. And we, I've already passed around, we have a request from Cook County to update their directory for our elected officials. So if you haven't already updated your information, please give it to me so that I can update it on their, on their records. I also responded today to the Township Officials of Cook County who wanted confirmation of our, what they had from the, from the election rolls. So are there any questions for me? Glad to answer any, but that's, that is the extent of my report right now. Okay. We'll move on to the assessor. I see that she's here.
Frances Edwards. Here is the Riverside Township Assessor. First of all, congratulations to the board and to Mary Jo Miller and the successful election. Mary Jo Miller will start her, her session in, on January first and we'll make sure for a smooth transition. So we have learned today through various news outlets that the second installment property taxes are delayed for Cook County. We have not heard any formal announcements or have had any communications from the Cook County Assessor's Office themselves. So we don't have any information about what to expect, but we just know that they are delayed. So, and this is the reason why we don't have a state multiplier, or Cook County multiplier at this time as well. So usually we have, very, you would have a multiplier by now. So we don't know what that is at this point in time. So, but we also have heard from the Board of Review, they're expecting to probably open for appeals in July. So it should be pretty busy depending on when the, the tax bills come out. That's all that's happening with us for now.
All right.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Trustees' reports. Trustee Clark, do you have anything for us?
Yes. I attended Lobby Day on April twenty-ninth. And we had a really good turnout for that. And also the treasurer, the state treasurer hosted a reception the night before for township officials, which was very nice. I also attended a TAC Board Meeting. And they have a new president for the TAC trustees and they're going to start up those meetings that we used to go to. And there probably won't be four a year, but maybe two a year on that. And the exercise class continues to go well.
Very good. Thank you very much. Trustee Highlandbach?
Hi, good evening. The Mental Health Board is proceeding very quickly through some things. We did approve, as you can recall, last month, we did have another agency by the name of Thrive out of Oak Park that does handle Riverside Township residents. We have given them a partnership, a small partnership. They're very grateful and they say that they can, they'll show us how, how well they are, they do their job. And we're looking forward to that. We've approved our budget and we have also set a tentative date for August thirty-first for our Health and Wellness Fair in, in North Riverside. A big thank you to the village of North Riverside for again, being so accommodating to us. And also I want you to, I recommend that you look again at Dr. Joe Trattiani, the articles that he has posted. There's some excellent ones. Plus it also has a lot of these states' house bills that are pending. Some of them have been approved, some of them have been tabled. But it gives you a, a good, good take on what it is. And I thank him for his reports. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Supervisor, may I ask trustee Highlandbach a question? What was the date for your fair?
August thirty-first.
That's a Sunday?
Yes, we know.
Okay. I just want to confirm. And thank you.
That, that would be Labor Day weekend then, correct?
I believe so.
Yeah, because.
But I mean, the way we were doing it, we were, we were buttoning up against North Riverside.
Sure. No, I, I encourage you.
Then they, the kids want to play basketball, I guess. I, you know, so we couldn't get the gym. So. We did some finagling. Sean from the CRC went in there and said, you know, the thirty-first, that's fine. We'll take it. We'll see how it goes.
Ten to two?
We haven't discussed a time yet.
But yes, as a reminder, next Thursday, the twenty-second, I forgot to mention that, is the, the Senior Fair at North Riverside. So I know that assessor Sitkowitz said that she would be there. And I think trustee Clark also indicated you would help us out. So that will be the Senior Fair at North Riverside. That is from ten to twelve. It's a short one. So. Okay. And trustee Carol, do you have anything for us?
Yes. So we had that, Madam Supervisor, I had alerted you that we had been reached out to by Adrian Calderon. He's the district director for Congressman Garcia. And they solicited us for a community project funding. So the House Appropriations Committee will give fifteen projects in a congressman's district for community project funding. I read that to mean a roof. However, we got it the twenty-fourth. It's a pretty vigorous application and it was due the twenty-fifth. So I, I reached out to the district director several times. It's been four weeks now and I've sent them three emails and I've not heard back about how we can maybe get more time to throw together this comprehensive community project funding program to help us out. And it's been crickets. So I don't know if anybody else has heard from Mr. Calderon. from Mr. Calderon, but he, it's been radio silence from the congressman's office. And, Madam Supervisor, you told me that
Yes.
North Riverside had
North Riverside had approached me. I was aware of it because North Riverside had approached me two days before that. They also got like four days' notice, but they already had a project in the works that they had applied before and hadn't heard anything, so they were basically refiling it, and they asked for a letter of support, which I provided to them. But, it's like, I don't know what happened on this round.
I don't know either.
I don't know if it
I'm just trying to get it earlier for next year.
Right.
Whenever it comes around, but I can't get anybody's.
I know, I know. It seemed like it was a very last-ditch effort on us, so.
Trustee Carol?
I will be in DC tomorrow on Capitol Hill for another reason. Do you want me to stop in?
Yeah, I mean, it'd be nice. I don't know
Ask about it?
I don't think the congressman would be able to tell me why this is. I think it's going to be Mr. Calderon that you'll want to talk to, the district director. And if he's got an office there, yeah, it'd be awesome if he could stop by and talk to him.
Okay.
Because we would need time. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a grant application. It's big. It's not guaranteed, but it's not a, I mean, I'm surprised they had it in four days. This is a project that we
Well, as I said, they already had this in the works, so they pretty much had it all put together. They were just putting some
So, there was no way we could comply and get this in on time. So, I'm, I'm just looking for lead time, that's all.
I think that they had actually put together that grant application for another grant, and so it was like they, they were able to shift, but you can't possibly put together a grant application in four days.
That would be super
Not for a federal grant, anyway. All right, thank you very much. And trustee DeCassola?
Thank you, Supervisor. Regarding the Lions Club Chicken Dinner, the township helped facilitate the compost totes that were provided, that Mr. Finn was talking about, and from what I understand, they had a very successful time with them and looks forward to using them in the future.
Good. Thank you very much for facilitating that for them. Appreciate that. All right, if there's nothing else, anybody have any questions for any of the trustees? All right, then we will move on to unfinished business, and that is, we had a hearing earlier this evening that nobody came to, so I guess everybody's okay with our budget. So, we have budget ordinance in your, in your binders. It is as you saw it last month. There have been no amendments to it. It's been open for inspection for more than 30 days. And now I will entertain a motion to adopt this budget ordinance for 2025 to 2026. That will run from fiscal year April 1, 2025, through March 31 of 2026. The total funds for, the total general town funds of $1,479,045. The general assistance fund, a total of $216,910. And for the community mental health fund, a total of $982,749.88. All this for a very small portion of your tax bill. So, what, I will entertain a motion to adopt this.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by trustee Carol, seconded by trustee Clark, to adopt the budget ending March 31st, 2026, as presented and open for inspection. Any discussion? Hearing none, then will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Trustee DeCassola?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes. We have a budget, folks.
Excellent.
And we will sign that original. All right, just for your information, again, as I mentioned, the Shred-a-thon is this Saturday, May 17th, from 9:00 AM to noon. The North Riverside Senior Fair is next Thursday, not this week, but next week, the May 22nd, from 10:00 AM to noon at the North Riverside Commons. And there is a sheet in here for what I mentioned, the Older Americans Act Day of Action, the Older Americans Act. There's some, along with all the other funding cuts that people are trying to make, the, we're trying to protect the Older Americans Act, which funds many of the services for seniors to keep seniors well, that organizations like Age Options, Aging Care Connections, and so forth, do, do provide. So, this action day is on May 28th at Village of North Riverside at 2401 Displanes Avenue at 8:30 in the morning. Includes a continental breakfast and basically a discussion and rally, encourage seniors to attend this as well. So, it's called Don't Blow Out the Candles on Older Americans Act. And you should have a copy of it in your book. We have provided these flyers also to our exercise class members and moviegoers. So, that takes us up to our warrants.
Trustee Heilenbach moves that the board authorize and ratify payment of the bills identified on the general warrant for May 2025 in the amount of $42,569.32, as presented to the board this 13th day of May 2025.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
You were louder. So, I have a motion by trustee Heilenbach, seconded by trustee Clark, to approve the general warrants for May of 2025 in the amount of $42,569.32. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Trustee DeCassola?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes. Motion is carried. And on to the other warrants.
Motion by trustee Heilenbach that the board ratify and authorize payment in the amounts indicated on the following warrants. The utility warrant for May 2025 in the amount of $1,541.99. The payroll audit for May 2025 in the amount of $25,350.54. The health warrant for May of 2025 in the amount of $3,436.10. The general assistance warrant for May of 2025 in the amount of $12,491.45. The township radio players warrant for May of 2025 in the amount of $240. The food pantry warrant for May of 2025 in the amount of $871.43. All of the above are presented to this board on the 13th day of May 2025.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Heilenbach, seconded by trustee DeCassola, to approve the following warrants for May of 2025. Utility warrant in the amount of $1,541.99. Payroll warrant in $25,350.54. Health warrant in the amount of $3,436.10. General assistance warrant in the amount of $12,491.45. Township radio players warrant in the amount of $240. And the food pantry warrant in the amount of $871.43. Are there any questions, any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Trustee DeCassola?
Yes.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes. Motion is carried. Okay, well, are there any public comments? Still have some guests here tonight. Anybody have any questions or comments? Hearing none, as was mentioned earlier, this board was all, the people sitting up front here were all re-elected, and we begin a new term on Monday. It's the third Monday in May that, that by state law, we take office, but we can be sworn in before that time. And in addition, we, as of January 1st, will have a new assessor, and since she's here, and we have the, we have a guest this evening to help swear us in, so we will also swear in Mary Jo Miller and congratulate her. I congratulate all of you on your reelection. You were given a certificate earlier this evening by the clerk from the county that certifies that you were elected, duly elected to these positions. So, if our Justice Navarro is, yeah, he's, he's robing up.
Do you want to go first or last?
I don't, I don't know. I'll let him decide how he wants to do it. Usually that goes in reverse order, so.
Good.
You may want to do it as a group, whatever. And I remind the trustees not to run off. We have some documents to sign.
Let me check the bathroom. Entertain the audience?
Yes, entertain the tourists.
Hello.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, I don't know. Lost him. Meeting went too long.
He's going to be back to robe in here.
Oh, oh, I thought he was robing up, so.
Okay. Well, why don't we wait, why don't we sign the
All right.
Sign that ordinance. So, we'll have the others sign the
Poor guy sat here the whole time.
This one's just the two of us.
Did you pen back, Charlie? Do you want to sign the minutes, too? I don't know if we always get those signed copies of books.
Sign the what?
The minutes that were approved?
The minutes?
The minutes that we approved, the minutes of the prior meeting, but there is a signature place.
Do you have those?
You don't have them in your book?
No.
They're right at the beginning. We're ready for you when you're ready for us. Yes.
Thank you so much, Justice Navarro.
All right.
Pleasure to welcome our own local appellate court justice.
So, we have individual, not a group.
Yep, that's fine.
We have each of those, too.
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach?
Present.
Trustee Mary Robb Clark?
Present.
Trustee DeCassola?
DeCassola, present. Thank you.
And trustee Carol?
Present.
Could you all stand and raise your hand? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Mary Robb Clark?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will honorably discharge the duties?
And that I will honorably discharge the duties?
Of the office of Riverside Township trustee?
Of the office of Riverside Township trustee?
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Consider yourselves sworn.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Get your hands off of that and wait your turn.
Okay.
Should we do the assessor next?
Who are we, the assessor here?
We do.
What a pleasure, Ms. swearing Mary Jo, my classmate from Going Back Plan. Well, Madam Assessor, good afternoon. I, Mary Jo Miller.
I, Mary Jo Miller.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of Riverside Township Assessor?
The office of the duties of Riverside Township Assessor?
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Consider yourselves sworn.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess I'm next.
All right, Mr. Reyes, good afternoon. I, J. Reyes.
I, J. Reyes.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
Of the office of Riverside Township Clerk?
Of the office of Riverside Township Clerk?
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Consider yourselves sworn.
Thank you.
And then we have the townships.
Pass those to Tim.
Supervisor Wilt?
I'll watch by now.
Supervisor Wilt, good afternoon. I, Vera A. Wilt?
I, Vera A. Wilt.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
Of the office of Riverside Township Supervisor?
Of the office of Riverside Township Supervisor.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Consider yourselves sworn.
Yeah, thanks, Judge.
Justice Navarro, it was a pleasure to have a local judge be able to do the honors for us. Do you have any words for us, any words of encouragement?
I really appreciate the work that you guys are doing. I love the work that you're supporting here at Presbyterian Church, for the Riverside Juniors, for the work in mental health, all that. It's such important work that may not always be recognized, but it's truly valuable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
While we finish the paperwork, I think that I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. I'll second.
I have a motion by trustee DeCassola, seconded by trustee Carol, to adjourn this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion is carried. Thank you very much.